Committee on Veterans, welcome to our Oversight Hearing on Cold War Veterans. Resolution number, again additionally today, the committee will hear three resolutions. Resolution number 10, which I have sponsored to recognize July 27th annually as Korean War Veterans Armistice Day in the City of New York to honor the courage and sacrifice of those who served. Resolution number 157, sponsored by my colleague, Councilmember Julie Menon, who's here today. The resolution is to recognize June 6th annually as D-Day Remembrance Day in the City of New York in honor of the courage and sacrifice of the Allied soldiers on the Normandy beaches in France, which is, was the defining moment in World War II. So I, you know, it's certainly appropriate and long overdue. And Resolution number 279, sponsored by Councilmember Vicky Palladino and myself, to call on the United States Congress to pass and the President to sign legislation declaring April 26th annually as Korean War Veterans and Korean Defense Veterans Recognition Day to celebrate the bravery and honor the sacrifices of those who served. I'll now call on my colleague, Councilmember Menon, to make a brief statement about her resolution.
Thank you so much Chair Holden, and it's an honor to be here, and as a daughter of a veteran, it means a lot to me to be here in front of your committee. So this summer will, as the Chair mentioned, mark the 80th anniversary of D-Day. Soldiers stormed the beaches of Normandy for one of the largest military operations in history. Nearly 160,000 Allied soldiers were involved in that fateful day that was monumental in ending World War II a year later. That is why I'm honored to introduce a resolution, Resolution 157, to recognize June 6th as D-Day Remembrance Day. It is incredibly fitting to have this resolution heard with the support of the Chair as the 80th anniversary of this event is this year. As former President Barack Obama said in 2014, victory on D-Day dealt a significant blow to an ideology fueled by hatred. There are still some veterans of World War II that are living in the United States and here in New York City. In fact, the National World War II Museum estimated that there are around 6,869, to be exact, living World War II veterans in New York. I can think of no better way to honor their legacy, their courage, and their ultimate sacrifice than having the city recognize such a critical day. I want to thank the bill drafter, Regina Paul, and from my team, Jonathan Shutt and Legislative Director Brandon Jordan. Thank you so much Chair for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Menon. And finally, by the way, Vicky Palladino, Councilmember Vicky Palladino is on her way, so we'll let her read a statement when she, on her resolution, when she arrives. Finally, let me say a few words about two resolutions honoring Korean War veterans and Korean Defense veterans. I believe that these resolutions are a step in ensuring that all veterans, regardless of when or where they served, receive the recognition they certainly deserve. These resolutions call for honoring those who have served in Korea, both during the Korean War and since then, to keep the fragile peace in that area of the world. I believe that they should be honored, and I think everyone would agree, both nationally and, of course, New York City should have a day of recognition. Since 1991 in New York City, we've had our own Korean War Veterans Memorial. It's a beautiful site in the Battery. It's one of the better memorials and monuments. So that monument displays a 15-foot black granite slab with a cutout in the shape of a soldier, one that you can look right through to see the Statue of Liberty. And it's really a moving, if you, if you look at, if you go down it, it's worth the trip just to see that part of it. It's a reminder of the price of liberty, that the price of liberty is often the fallen and our missing soldiers, you know, paying the price. So may we remember them today and every day. And now, in today's hearing, which will be focused on the needs of veterans who served in the Cold War era, a group whose sacrifices and contributions often go unrecognized. The Cold War era, specifically the period following the end of the Vietnam War, may not have seen the intensity or direct conflict that some wartime periods have, but it's undeniable that it shaped the course of history and demanded sacrifices of the men and women who answered the call to serve. Our veterans who proudly wore the uniform during the Cold War era are a testament to resilience and selflessness. They stood ready to protect us during a time of global tension, and it's often, you know, we have a lot of that, and again, those are, they're put on the front lines, and it's our duty to recognize that commitment by ensuring their well-being and addressing specific needs they have now. And certainly, there's many that we need to obviously catch up on, but there's so many things we can do that we're not doing. So at this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleague, Kristi Marmarado, who is, again, one of the, you know, certainly loyal members of this committee, and like I said, Vicky Palladino's on her way. So I'd also like to thank the committee staff who worked to prepare this hearing. Regina Paul, to my right, our policy analyst, who's invaluable, by the way, does a lot of work, I want to thank her, always has great ideas, and also wrote three resolutions we are hearing today. So, and then Ross Goldstein, our financial analyst. And finally, my staff member who's under the weather, Daniel Cuzina, he's the Chief of Staff of my office. And I would like to now turn it over to Regina to administer the oath to the witness, Commissioner Hendon from the Administration.
We have Commissioner James Hendon and Cassandra Alvarez for the Administration. Would you please raise your right hands? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmembers' questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. As a reminder for all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to the testimony for the record.
My name is James Hendon, I serve as Commissioner of the New York City Department of Veteran Services, just for the record. Good morning Chair Holden, committee members, veterans, and Armed Forces members in attendance, the loved ones and advocates. My name is James Hendon, I serve as Commissioner for the New York City Department of Veteran Services. I'm joined today by my colleague Sandra Alvarez, DVS's Chief of Staff. Thank you for providing us with the opportunity to discuss peacetime-era veterans and the work that we have done and are doing in support of New York City's peacetime-era veteran community, almost all of whom living today served during the Cold War. Following my testimony, we welcome any questions that committee members may have. The Cold War, spanning from the end of World War II in 1945 to the dissolution of the Soviet Union in 1991, was a time of heightened global tension amid an arms race that put servicemen and women in unique positions of risk. While punctuated by direct periods of conflict from the Korean War to the Vietnam War to Operations Desert Shield and Desert Storm, roughly 26 out of the Cold War's 46 years consisted of traditional force-on-force confrontation. There were extended periods of time, cumulatively 20 years, that did not include the conventional kinetic actions typically associated with times of war. Veterans serving during these occasions operated under the constant threat of nuclear war, engaged in espionage, and participated in proxy operations that have left lasting impacts on their physical and mental health. Despite these sacrifices, peacetime-era veterans face several challenges recognizing and receiving benefits. Unlike their counterparts from other combat eras, many peacetime-era veterans do not qualify for certain benefits due to the non-combat nature of their service. That being said, for our peacetime-era veterans, DVS has gone beyond traditional support to create initiatives that honor their unique position in our nation's military history. We acknowledge their service in guarding our nation during times of global uncertainty and have taken steps to ensure that they receive the respect and opportunities they deserve. This includes facilitating their integration into the city's richer way of resources. DVS has demonstrated this commitment through offering comprehensive services, establishing strategic partnerships, and conducting targeted outreach and engagement. Some notable programs, partnerships, and outreach that serve peacetime-era veterans within the agency include, but are not limited to, Civil Service Veterans expansions. Working in partnership with the New York City Department of, Citywide Administrative Services, DVS helped to expand New York City's veteran and disabled veteran credit to include veterans who served during both peacetime and conflict. Get Covered NYC Vet, Get Covered NYC Vet helps veteran and military families of all eras access VA healthcare and/or the New York State of Health where applicable. HUD-VASH Collaborative Case Management. Working with our partners at the VA, NYCHA, and HPD, DVS executes the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Collaborative Case Management Program, or VASH-CCM. Collaborative Case Management, formerly known as VASH Continuum, is a form of VASH, a Section 8-style voucher for veterans, specific to veterans who are not eligible for VA healthcare. DVS provides case management to these veterans, notably including any peacetime-era veterans who, due to the nature of their service, may not be eligible for the traditional HUD-VASH program.
Excuse me Commissioner, could we just hold for one minute? We're having a little trouble with the QR code. We just need to get that working and then we'll pick up with you again.
You can take a breath.
Veteran Resource Centers. DVS positions, sorry, I'm going to go from HUD-VASH, I'm so sorry. HUD-VASH Collaborative Case Management. Working with our partners at the VA, NYCHA, and HPD, DVS executes the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Collaborative Case Management Program, or VASH-CCM. Collaborative Case Management, formerly known as VASH Continuum, is a form of VASH, a Section 8-style voucher for veterans, specific to veterans who are not eligible for VA healthcare. DVS provides case management to these veterans, notably including any peacetime-era veterans who, due to the nature of their service, may not be eligible for the traditional HUD-VASH program. Veteran Resource Centers. DVS positions veteran benefit advisors in each of the five boroughs to ensure that veterans of all eras, including peacetime-era veterans, have access to our agency's support and services. Indigent Burials. Through our working relationship with the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, DVS ensures that no eligible veteran is without an honorary burial in a VA national cemetery, regardless of the veteran's personal, financial disposition, or era of service. And Claim Support. Accredited DVS staff members process VA claims for New York City veterans and their families, focusing on areas such as disability compensation, dependent indemnity compensation, non-service-connected pension, survivor's pension, and education benefits. We provide this offering to all veterans, including those who served during a peacetime era. I'll speak now about enhanced recognition through homeownership support. Turning to the tangible metrics of our commitment to veterans in New York, the property tax exemptions that currently exist for veterans highlight our city's substantial investment in the well-being of those who served. Per the New York City Department of Finance's annual report on tax expenditures for FY24, 31,264 veteran property owners utilized a veteran property tax exemption. 2,918 in Manhattan, 2,481 in the Bronx, 6,330 in Brooklyn, 12,396 in Queens, and 7,139 in Staten Island. The total value of the exemption was $36.1 million, suggesting an average annual benefit of $1,155 per veteran. We acknowledge that homeownership is not just about having a roof over one's head, it's about stability, equity, and the promise of the American dream. Thus, the State of New York and City of New York dedicated resources and enacted exemptions that ease the financial burden on our veterans, enabling them to secure and maintain a place they call home. During the mayoralty of Michael Bloomberg and City Council speakership of Christine Quinn more than 10 years ago, the Speaker and City Council pledged to honor two out of the three state-authorized exemptions for those who've served. The first exemption, the Alternative Veterans Exemption, is available to eligible veterans of foreign wars, those who have earned expeditionary medals, veterans with honorable discharges, spouses, widows, and widowers of veterans, and Gold Star parents. The second is the Eligible Funds Exemption. The Eligible Funds Exemption is available for veterans who purchased homes using eligible funds such as pensions, bonuses, insurance, and mustering out of pay. The third exemption, which was not adopted by the City of New York at the time, is the Cold War Veterans Exemption. The Cold War Veterans Exemption explicitly affords a property tax exemption to veterans who served during the Cold War from September 2nd, 1945, through December 26th, 1991. The State authorizes New York's tax jurisdictions to offer all three exemptions if the jurisdiction so chooses. New York City currently has chosen two out of the three. That said, a veteran cannot simultaneously utilize the Alternative Veterans Exemption and the Cold War Veterans Exemption once a tax jurisdiction offers it, it's either one or the other. To address a concern raised by the City Council in the present regarding the question, what would it cost for the city to employ the Cold War Veterans Property Tax Exemption in 2024? This question does not have a direct answer for reasons that we will describe at its heart, are two challenges. One, a majority of veterans in New York City do not self-identify. 75.8% of veterans in this city don't self-identify according to the VA as of FY22. And two, the federal government excludes a large number of veterans in the population numbers that it tracks. This is true for both the VA and the Census Bureau. Regarding the Department of Veterans Affairs, the VA excludes veterans who are not eligible for VA healthcare in its population counts. Among other things, a person who enlisted after September 7th, 1980, needs at least two years of active service in the military to be eligible for VA healthcare. Also, a person is not automatically eligible for VA healthcare if they have a discharge that is lower than a general discharge under honorable conditions. These people are not accounted for in the VA's data. Meanwhile, the Census Bureau only conveys a number of veterans who served on active-duty status at some, at some point and no longer served, serve. Many guardsmen and reservists are not included within that group. Speaking for myself, I'm a U.S. Army reservist who served in the military for more than 20 years. I am not counted as a veteran per the Census Bureau's metrics. This is because I'm still serving. I will be counted as a veteran once I retire from the Army because I have active-duty service time. If I did not have active-duty service time, if I'd spent my entire career as a guardsman or reservist who was never placed on federal active-duty orders, then I would never be counted by the Census Bureau. Many veterans are excluded from what the Census Bureau and VA track when it comes to active versus non-active service. Many of those folks who are excluded are National Guardsmen and Reservists. To put things in perspective, nationwide, approximately 1.3 million people serve on active-duty status in the U.S. Armed Forces right now. Another 770,000 are National Guardsmen or Reserve and Reservists. These numbers were significantly higher during the Cold War. In 1985, there were 2.2 million servicemembers on active duty and 1.1 million in the Reserve and National Guard. The number of veterans in New York City, according to the Census Bureau, this is a 2022 ACS five-year estimate, which is recently released, is 135,138, of whom 106,952 served during periods of conflict, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Gulf War onwards into what we now know as the Global War on Terror. The remaining 28,186 prior service members are peacetime-era veterans. It is important to remember, the Census Bureau does not break out veterans by era, however, it only include, the Census Bureau does break out veterans by era, however, it only includes those who served on active-duty status at some point in their careers and who no longer serve. Many veterans of the Guard and Reserve who never served on active duty are not included in the Census Bureau's data. The NYC Department of Veteran Services estimates that at least 203,357 veterans live in New York City. Our numbers derive from VA data, the VA's Gross Domestic Expenditure Report for 2022, through which we know the number of past service members eligible for VA healthcare in New York City. It's 159,132. Beyond this, we estimate that 31,104 veterans are not eligible for VA healthcare. This is informed by multiplying national discharge averages by known VA information. Separately from the Defense Department, we know that 13,121 active-duty personnel, guardsmen, and reservists currently reside in the five boroughs. Our three numbers combined, 159,132, 31,104, 13,121, give us a known veteran population of 203,357. Even our numbers, because they're informed by federal entities, exclude a significant number of guardsmen and reservists who, because they never served on federal active-duty orders, are not eligible for VA healthcare. DVS estimates that at least 30,000 New York City veterans, many of whom are former guardsmen and reservists who served during periods of peace, are amongst this excluded but equally important group. Another piece of information that we believe may be valuable to this conversation, according to the 2022 ACS five-year estimate, approximately 33% of all housing units in New York City are owner-occupied, 1 million owner-occupied units out of 3.2 million total units. A 2020 Urban Institute study holds that nationwide, the veteran homeownership rate is 14 percentage points higher than the rate for the total population. This suggests a homeownership rate of 47% for veterans throughout the City of New York, 33% plus 14%. Using ACS data, which holds, once again, 28,186 peacetime-era veterans in New York City, simultaneously excluding those guardsmen and reservists I've mentioned, one can assume just looking at the ACS veteran data, at least 13,247 veterans, or 47% of our peacetime-era veterans in this city are homeowners. Staying with the American Community Survey, given that 106,952 combat veterans in New York City are in New York City, once again, based on this five-year estimate, which we do not believe is fully inclusive, and assuming a homeownership rate of 47%, we can conclude that at least 50,267 combat-era veterans in New York City are homeowners. Given what we know from the tax report, 31,264 New York City veterans used a veteran's property tax exemption in FY24, knowing that there are at least 50,267 combat-era veterans who own homes in the five boroughs, the utilization rate of the existing property tax exemptions in New York City for veterans, amongst those eligible for it, amongst combat veterans who own homes, is 62%. So 62% of all veterans who are homeowners, who are combat veterans who are homeowners, use one of the existing veteran property tax exemptions. Should we apply the same utilization rate, 62%, to the minimum number of peacetime-era veterans in the city who own homes, 13,247? Then one can estimate that at least 8,213 peacetime-era veterans in New York City would avail themselves of a Cold War property tax exemption if allowed. So, once again, we believe that 8,213 peacetime-era veterans who own homes would avail themselves of a Cold War property tax exemption if allowed. In total, that 8,213 veterans multiplied by the average annual benefit of the existing property tax exemption for veterans, it's $1,155, equals $9.5 million. So we believe that 8,213 veterans who are peacetime-era own homes would use an exemption if allowed. The average annual benefit is $1,155 per veteran for the combat vets who use it, that comes out to $9.5 million. Given all of the assumptions made, using publicly available data to reach an estimated number, and recognizing gaps in our core facts regarding the number of New York City's peacetime-era National Guardsmen and Reservists, we urge further review of the budget impact of enacting New York State's Cold War Veterans Property Tax Exemption in the City of New York. In conclusion, we pray that this testimony has provided you with a firm understanding of our agency's efforts to support peacetime-era veterans and their families. Additionally, we hope that our analysis may undergird future deliberations on the costs to employ New York State's Cold War Veteran Property Tax Exemption. We recognize how important this is to our peacetime-era veterans. Beyond just speaking of veteran property tax exemptions, a key factor to this and all of our actions and conversations is taking steps to remove walls from within New York City's military and veteran community. In the city with the most permissive definition of veteran in the nation and perhaps the world, we do not want our brothers and sisters to feel as though we are treating them differently based on their length of service, their character of service, their type of service, along with when and where they've served. Lastly, we welcome continued collaboration as we work together to connect, mobilize, and empower New York City's veteran community. I urge you all to please contact me, our Chief of Staff Cassandra Alvarez, or our Senior Advisor of Intergovernmental Affairs Jason Lockren with follow-up questions or thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, we've been joined by Councilmember Ariola. Those numbers that you just read, you know, again, it might cost us $10 million for property, that's your estimate, that, which is very valuable at this point, because it's not a lot of money. But would you say that, since many veterans don't self-identify, if we offered the property tax exemption, that would actually bring more veterans to self-identify? I mean, there would, there's an advantage to that. There's, not only would they get the exemption, but they could get other services too, that we don't know, we don't know they, they exist in fact, right?
You're right, and to call these numbers out, it's 24.2% of our veterans self-identify. We're seeing of the combat-era veterans who own homes, 62% are using that veteran property tax exemption. So you have to assume that if this were expanded to the peacetime-era veterans through the Cold War exemption, that you would see more identify. This dovetails right back to Intro 1237, which the Council passed, which I believe is about to be done aging soon, where now having the question on all the paperwork too, have you served? This is something else that's enabled, but you're absolutely correct as far as the implications of having this for the peacetime-era veterans, Mr. Chair.
So you, you agree that Cold War veterans who served between the end of the Vietnam War and the beginning of the Persian Gulf War deserve more benefits than they are currently getting from the federal, state, and our local governments?
I think it should be, I don't think of it as more, I think of it as equal benefits. And a key thing I'd love you to take away from this today is...
Well, more than, more than they're getting now.
Equal, yep, equal, yep, correct, Mr. Chair.
Well, everybody should get the same.
Equal, in other words, we, we don't want to, we've got so many people not identifying because they feel like, oh, I'm not really a veteran, I didn't serve in combat, or I didn't deploy, or I was in the Guard, I was in the Reserve. And I just want us to attack that in all ways, shapes, and forms. If you took the oath, we want to do right by you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you for that. And again, this is, you know, we've had some discussions on this, certainly at our hearings before. What particular outreach did DVS do to Cold War veterans of this peacetime era?
I'm going to pass it to Cass to answer, but I've got to underscore, we're trying our best to make our folks feel like you're no different from your brothers who did deploy. For us, it's you took the oath, we put hands on you, we love you. I just want to say that, but I'm going to defer to Cass on the comms.
Thank you Commissioner, and good morning Chair Holden and members of the committee. We're very fortunate to have two veterans on our communications team, so they engage the community with a sense of cultural competency and perspective of those who served, which we appreciate. And so, we have a few key pillars that we structure our communications around. Number one is our weekly newsletter, it's sent out via email. We've got about 10,000 subscribers on that newsletter list right now. That's a content-rich communication, it changes weekly. It's got information about various benefits and events happening throughout the city. We also try to amp up our presence at community events because we know some of our Cold War veterans and certainly older generations, maybe they're not all digitally connected, so we try to have an on-the-ground presence and do outreach at public engagement events, which is another reason why we've added that metric to the agency's mayor's management report. It's a public engagement metric that we're now reporting on. And then we also have a campaign going called Mission Vet Check. It's a program that we started actually during the pandemic, but we relaunched it again last year, and that is a phone call campaign where we leverage volunteers to make wellness check calls to our veterans across the city, and of course, Cold War veterans are included in that group. So that's some phone contact that we try to make every, every week. And then, we've also used text messaging, that's something that we just introduced last year through the agency. That's text messaging, that's about the events that we have going on. We text them about our quarterly engagement sessions, which we've just started hosting last quarter of this year. And then, in the beginning of this year, we also rolled out letters to the community boards, the council members, and to the senior center directors to just disseminate information about DVS, basic information about the agency, so that folks know that we exist, they have our, our basic website information. we exist, they have our, our basic website information, phone number, et cetera. So that's been a useful tool for us. So that, those are the different sort of ways that we engage the community.
All right. Any additional, uh, needs that, in order to get some more feedback, are, personally, are you getting feedback? Are you getting a good amount of feedback from veterans? And, um, what, what about, do you keep records of Cold War veterans that are giving you feedback or at least, uh, contacting you? Do you have, do you separate them?
So we actually, um, launched a community survey earlier this year, um, and that certainly is collecting responses from Cold War veterans. We did a survey back in 2021 as well that also, um, included them as a, a response demographic. We collect responses from all veterans, you know, we, we get, uh, and, you know, contact through the connect inbox on our website. So I, we don't necessarily triage by, um, combat era, because as the Commissioner said, we, we engage equally. But certainly, we're always open to feedback and we collect that and, and respond.
So, um, do you, do you get, uh, are you aware of vet, any veterans organizations that already support Cold War veterans? I would think they would, um, but do, do you get, um, a, a lot of feedback on, from veteran organizations about Cold War? Is that like a major topic with them?
Not really. I mean, the, nationally, there's a group called American Cold War Veterans, but they don't have a footprint here in New York City, uh, as far as a national group that we know that does focus specifically on this, this segment. Beyond that, it's, you know, we see our Cold War veterans as members of our American Legion posts, as members of our Catholic War Veterans posts, our Jewish War Veterans posts, even for Vietnam Veterans of America, it's that you have to have served during the Vietnam era, not that you have to have deployed to Vietnam, Laos, or Cambodia. So we see these things layered within the existing, uh, legacy VSOs, Mr. Chair.
So how could the, our city council, uh, better support, uh, the provisions and services to, to the Cold War veterans? What would you suggest? That's a trick question.
I wanna, if you don't mind, I wanna just take it thirty thousand feet and then drill down. I think that it's key to know as, as, as policymakers too, that the original sin here was the federal government's decision to divide the groups, to really separate the peacetime era versus the wartime era as a way to cut costs, a way to save money. You know, there was that decision made back in the nineteen eighties where you have to have at least two years of active federal service to even be eligible for VA healthcare, which is a turnkey for so many other things. And I think we've seen that kind of metastasizing in other ways where at state and local levels, folks started making these decisions to surgically, you know, set things up where we wanna, I'm only, I only have so much money, I'm gonna give this group of veterans a benefit versus this group. And I just, you know, and I think that...
We, we know the motives of to save money, obviously, but the city, the city can compensate somewhat with legislation that we could, we've introduced, uh, actually in the last council, um, and I'd like your opinion on, on the bill, even though it's about to be reintroduced. It was, uh, Councilmember Barelli's bill, um, it was introduced in the last session, and it, like I said, it's about to be reintroduced, um, which would amend the administrative code to establish in New York City the real property tax exemption for Cold War veterans that is allowed by the state of New York. The state of New York says we could, we could do it, we elected not to. And I think we need to fix this. So, um, I know that you support it, uh, because we've had conversations, I hope I didn't, you know, but I, but I think, um, I don't want to speak for you, but I think it's, it was your priority, was my priority when I became the Veterans Chair, because it's the right thing to do. So I think the New York City needs to catch up, will certainly talk, um, to leadership, but I think that needs to be, you know, really put on the fast track, uh, as a bill. So, um, anyway...
Mr. Chair, just to, to, to double down where you are, um, as a veteran, I, I can't sit here and not support this, as far as doing right by our people.
Of course not.
And it, it gets, to me, it, it gets at the heart of self-identification, you know, like we need to remove these walls where people think, I am a veteran, or I'm not a veteran, et cetera, and you took the oath, we need to do right by you. So as a veteran, I, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of it. On the administrative side, with my government hat on, what's tough is that my mandate is to focus on assisting and forming the military community and veteran community in areas laid out already, where we talk about healthcare, housing, benefits, culture, education, employment. This piece, as far as, I, I don't have the authority to weigh in, in that capacity.
I get that, that's why...
But as a, as a veteran, I want to be very clear, absolutely, this is, um, this is critical.
Again, there's, 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 uh, you can't speak for the administration, that the bill hasn't been reintroduced yet, and I, I expected that. But, um, that's why I was speaking to the veteran side of you, and I should have qualified that. But, um, li- like the offshoot, there's so many other, like I mentioned before about the benefits, uh, not only of, you know, they could self-identify and get more benefits. But let me just go back to outreach again, because I had, you know, we talked about this a little bit more, but I'd like specifics, if you can, you know, in addition to what you're already doing, um, in outreach, um, what about piggybacking on other communications with the city of New York? Like, you know, um, if, they, they're communicating almost every month, I get a few things from the city of New York, couldn't we put it in an envelope with something about, uh, veterans' benefits? If you have, you know, if you haven't, uh, self-identified, maybe it's a good time because this is, this, you might qualify for this, 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 and this. I mean, could, could that be, are you doing anything on that?
Okay. Um, so I, I think that we've done that a couple of ways, and we're certainly exploring furthering that idea. One of the things that we've done, as I mentioned before, is that we shared our flyer and our information with the senior center directors. So we're not necessarily piggybacking off of a direct mailing in that sense, but we're piggybacking off of a standing system that DIFDA already has in place to engage their senior center directors. I think they bring them together quarterly. So the Commissioner's been presenting at those meetings, and then afterwards, we're disseminating our flyer and all of our information out to those center directors so that they can hand that over to their members. So that's, that's one idea. I know that you're mentioning like getting into other mailings, like with the Department of Finance, I think that's something that we can certainly explore. We've, we've toyed with that idea before. I think, you know, if there's movement on property taxes...
And another one that Cass was directly with too, is, um, reaching out to all who had identified as veterans who were in passport, you know, working with the Mayor's Office of Contract Services, so we've done those types of partnerships. And something that we are excited about too is working more closely with our elected officials such as yourself, as far as making sure that any content that we can include within existing mailers that you have, that that can be an amplifier of us. And so that's another piece, Mr. Chair.
But yeah, let's look at creative ways, because I'm always thinking about communications, that, that was my field. So that's why I mentioned everything available in the neighborhoods, bus shelters that are, uh, ads that they, that the city can do, or, um, even free stuff, like, uh, billboards that are in between, uh, the contracts. Let's say they sit there dormant, that there are, many times the, the billboard is peeling already that they don't have another ad, and billboard companies could, might be able to donate that space. Uh, we, we provide the art, let's say your office provides the art, and they just put it up for a few months. But things like that, creative ways, especially when the city of New York is not funding you properly to, to do any outreach, really. I don't even know if you can do any mass mailings at this point with that budget, especially when they throw pegs in. So, um, again, that's, um, do you, do you, do you want to speak about your resolution?
Yes.
Do you, tell me know when you're ready? Okay. Anyway, any of my colleagues have questions? Okay. Councilmember Mamorato?
Well, thank you so much, and it's so good to see some of my Bronx veterans here today. Hopefully you guys are gonna speak in a little bit, and I'd like to hear what you have to say, and thank you for showing up. So it kind of like boggles my mind to hear that some of the peacetime, uh, veterans don't receive services. What would you say are like the most important services that they're not receiving? Like something that would be such valuable to their life?
I think the VA healthcare is at the top of the ticket, as far as, and when we think about it, the VA guidelines right now, you have to have at least two years of active service, um, Councilmember Mamorato. And so what's happening is, if I'm a, it's really the Guard and Reservist, Guardsmen and Reservists who served during periods when we were not at war. So think about that period between end of Vietnam to the beginning of, uh, Desert Shield, Desert Storm. And so a lot of folks may have, we had someone who worked in our office who served for eight years, and I believe she was in the, in the Reserve, and, um, you know, she was not eligible for VA healthcare. So I'd argue that's one of like the largest things that is often not available, and that happens to disproportionately affect peacetime-era veterans, the way these rules are drawn up.
Yeah, you're going in with the same intent as if, if something does occur and you may have to serve, that I don't understand why they're not entitled to any kind of healthcare services, not even like physicals, anything like that, just no health insurance.
A caveat as of late, giving credit to the federal government, they've made it where if you have toxic exposure, uh, while in military service, you may be automatically eligible for VA healthcare, that's something tied to the PACT Act. And so that is something that we are grateful for on the federal side, but the fact remains that many of our folks who answered the call and who served, especially Guard and Reserve who served when we were not at war, when they were not in a situation where they could be deployed, those folks are bereft of benefits. And then I just have to underscore, as you deliberate on what to do next with these things, we don't even know the exact number of folks who are like this. Because even that twenty-eight thousand, um, just keep in mind, it's, it, the Census Bureau only counts someone who served on active, in active status at some point and no longer serves. So you have to have served on active status and no longer served. That person I met who was in our office who was a reservist, she did eight years, she was in the Reserve, she was never caught up on active orders, she's done training orders but not active orders, and therefore, she's not included in the Census Bureau's information. And so it'd be remiss for me to not make it clear to folks that we've got a huge blind spot here that's intentionally created at the federal level, so we don't even fully know the number of peacetime-era veterans that are out here who have these needs.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Councilmember Palladino will talk on her resolution, then we'll go back to some more questions.
Good morning. How's everybody? I just want to talk a little bit about, uh, Resolution Number Two Seventy-Nine. We're introducing this, uh, to make it a Korean War Veterans Day. We often talk about Vietnam and the forgotten heroes of the Vietnam War. Well, we also are forgetting, let me correct, conflict. You see, it was never categorized as a war, it was always considered a conflict. So, uh, with that right there, you're not getting the recognition that you deserve. So we are calling upon, uh, the United States Congress and the city council to recognize our forgotten heroes of the Korean War. And, uh, this resolution is extremely important to us, uh, committee member, uh, committee Chair Holden and myself, along with Gennaro, that we want to see this July twenty-seventh made officially Korean War Veterans Day. No longer to be forgotten, no longer to be considered a conflict, it was a war whereas, uh, we still have, I think it's, uh, thirty-eight thousand or twenty-eight thousand still on the line in Korea right now, serving. We have got the largest, uh, it is the largest outpost for our servicemen here, and it's, it's absolutely, they need to be recognized, and we gotta go forward with this. So again, calling upon everybody to cooperate and make sure that this passes and is, again, recognized. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember, and, uh, I, you know, the Korean War, I, and I remember, you know, because I was, I was alive during the Korean War, um, I remember it being called police action. Does anybody else remember that? I mean, that, they don't call it that anymore, police action, believe that, you know, that's, it's very odd that they just don't want us to call it a war, but it actually was, real combat. My father-in-law served, um, both in World War II and Korea, he was twenty years in the Army. Horrific fighting, and it was really, he was in Normandy, but he said the Korean War was, was vicious because of the weather. Uh, and, um, so he served at Inchon, he'd served it during the retreat, he was in artillery, but he would tell stories, he could actually talk about it, uh, how horrific it was, the Korean War. But I'd like to, uh, introduce, um, Councilmember Ariola, who has a few questions and comments.
I've been listening to your testimony, Commissioner, and each time we meet, we're all in the same boat, so to speak, fighting for what our veterans need, whether it's mental health care, uh, health care in general, housing, uh, food vouchers, housing vouchers, all the things that our veterans don't have or don't have in abundance, which we are currently giving in abundance to people who have just entered our city. And this is something that we have to look at. So one of the questions on here is what can we as a city council do to help you help veterans? That's really a question for us. And the answer is that we have to get with our colleagues, we have to get, sit with the mayor, we have to sit with the speaker, and say, at this point, what we're doing is putting us on the wrong side of history. We cannot be completely defunding our veterans and disregarding their needs while taking care of a humanitarian crisis that should be taken care of on a federal level. So I give you my commitment, and the, and I don't speak for the entire committee, but I believe that our chairman, who has been a staunch advocate, and that's why he is a chair of this committee, we need to do better. We've said that from day one, we haven't done better yet, but we need to do better. If the money is there for people who have just entered our city, the money is there to take care of those who fought for our city, our country, and we need to take better care of them. And then we will see veterans in home, homes. We will see veterans get the mental, mental health care they need. We will see veterans get the cancer treatments and any other kind of treatment that they need for their health care. We will see veterans placed in jobs that they can do still. We will see veterans put first, and that's my statement. And I, and I really, I know that there are many people on both sides of the aisle that would feel the very same way. So I want the veterans in this room to go back to your fellow veterans to say that this committee is going to fight to make sure that you receive your fair share of the pie this budget season. Thank you so much for the time, Chair.
And, and on that subject, uh, Councilmember, we're trying, as a committee, to try to, um, get, uh, member item initiatives for veterans. That means whatever the amount, it could be ten thousand, it could be fifty thousand, but each council member gets right now, we get money, um, for various, um, populations in our district and, um, and around the city. Immigrants, we get a pot of money there for immigrant services. Obviously, we get money for, for our schools. What we should get, and in my, I would start at fifty thousand, we should get fifty thousand dollars in our budget for veterans' services. That's a no-brainer in my book, and I think most of the committee, I think everyone here agrees, uh, that that should be, and, and, and the money could be used for various things. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk to the mayor about helping out with that area, at least put, to, if it is brought up in the budget, that the mayor supports that. So let's say veteran service organizations, they would get money to help even with, and I'm hoping it could even go for capital, but that, that's important, to, to fix some of the veteran, uh, service organizations that are suffering now. Even to go so far, and we do have bills on this, by the way, for, um, actually, um, helping them, um, when they get, let's say, a fine from the DOB, Department of Buildings, that we give them a period to correct the situation rather than a fine, because that's like sometimes a nail in the coffin for some of these, uh, veteran service organizations. They're just staying, you know, with their, trying to stay with their heads above water at this point, and now we're, we're penalizing them for some violation, obscure violation in Department of Buildings. So why, what's the advantage of, do we need the money for, from our veterans' services organizations? No. And we shouldn't expect that. We should actually correct the situation, help them to correct it, walk them through it, and give them more time. So that, that, that bill is also, uh, lingering, and I hope we get, this committee can hear that in the near future. We've been joined by Councilmember Nurse, um, but...
I just, I just want to say, um, I, uh, I'm thinking about Paul when you talk about that. This is stuff we would talk about all the time, as far as Paul Vallone, who passed, and he would be standing, he'd be here with me if he was still here. And, um, this was, everything you're saying, it's everything that, I agree with you, I just want to say that, I just, I'm just thinking about Paul as you speak on that, as far as the dream here, Mr. Chair, all of it, yeah.
So, um, anybody else have any question, more questions? All right, we're gonna, we're gonna let you go. So thank you so much, we appreciate the testimony, um, and again, we'll see you at the next hearing, uh, but thank you again, Commissioner, uh, for your commitment to our veterans. It's, uh, it's amazing, all the work you do. You can't, you can't ever, you know, he, he's always, you know, attending some veterans' function almost every night, because I do call him, and he's always at some function. So we thank you again, Commissioner. Thanks for your commitment.
Mr. Schiff, I may just, I want to be certain to express, we completely support the work to acknowledge our Korean War veterans, I just want to be clear about that. I just want to let the record show, when we look at these numbers, uh, we had one-point-eight million... we had 1.8 million in theater, 33,739 died, and then you have just in combat deaths, non-combat deaths but deaths in service in theater, another 2,835. And then wounded in action, 103,284. It's more than 7,500 still missing in action, too, that we haven't found yet. Teams are still actively looking for brothers and sisters who are missing and unaccounted for there. So we very much support everything that you want to do there as far as recognizing the Korean War veterans. Just want to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going into the public testimony. I want to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card at the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have, I'm gonna change it to three minutes. You'll have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topic. And it's really, the hearing topic is Cold War veterans. So if you have written, a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. So Regina, if you can call the first panel.
We'll have two panels today here in the room. The first panel will be Ashton Stewart, Peter Kempner, Joshua Sukal, and Timothy Peña. Please come up, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good morning. My name is Ashton Stewart, I'm a veteran liaison at MJHS in the Hospice and Palliative Care Program. Chair Holden and members of the New York City Council Committee on Veterans. And Regina, thank you for all your work and for holding this hearing today to address Resolutions Number 10, 157, 279, and 279 that will publicly recognize the bravery and sacrifices made by our World War II veterans and Korean veterans. Since joining MJHS, the number of veteran patients we care for continues to grow. As does the complexity of their needs, our aging veteran population, in particular, World War II veterans and Korean War veterans, face unique challenges on a daily basis that we see that they need additional support and planning that are vitally necessary for patients and caregivers. Since 2010, MJHS has been a member of the We Honor Veterans program, a national initiative between the VA and the National Palliative Care Organization. We are a Level V provider, which is the highest you can get, and we mentor other hospices across the country. And last year, we won the We Honor Veterans Outstanding Programming Award for our robust program. We encounter far too many veterans who have not enrolled in the VA and are not receiving compensation for their injuries, and it frustrates me to meet a veteran at the end of life who is dying from a service-connected injury yet never applied for benefits or sought support from the VA. To better help veterans admitted to our program, I recently earned recognition as a credentialed veteran service officer. And all who served receive accolades through our We Honor Veterans program. Whenever we have the opportunity to offer an in-person ceremony or hybrid pining ceremony, we do, and we meet with veterans and their families to honor them for their service and listen to the heroic stories of sacrifice and patriotism and provide them with a sense of comfort. One such ceremony took place last summer when we honored a 90-year-old Korean War veteran. On July 27th, 2023, was the 70th anniversary of the end of the Korean War, but living in New York City wouldn't have known it. We acknowledged this anniversary through an incredibly powerful and moving pining ceremony in the presence of the veteran, his wife, and his family for not one but three milestones. We acknowledged his valor as a U.S. Marine, fighting in a war on foreign soil, while trailblazing his way in the U.S. military history as he was one of 300,000 black soldiers who were the first to fight in a newly desegregated military. This ceremony marked the 75th anniversary of Executive Order 9981, which abolished segregation in the military, signed on July 26, 1948. It was a powerful ceremony for all present, but nothing compared to the jubilation felt when celebrating this couple's 68th wedding anniversary. Among other accolades, this Marine was presented with a special citation from New York City Department of Veteran Services Commissioner James Hendon, acknowledging his exemplary service and leadership. There is so much richness in a veteran's life that often goes by unnoticed or unspoken. There are also many missed opportunities for veterans to access benefits. The VA has recognized that less than a quarter of veterans are accessing memorial benefits, even though almost all veterans and their spouses are eligible. This number lags far behind the interest shown by MJHS veteran families, indicating that awareness is crucial. Matthew Quinn, the VA's Undersecretary for Memorial Affairs, recently stated at the Senate Committee on Veterans Affairs hearing that increasing awareness is a top priority to inform the underused memorial benefits. By supporting Resolutions 10, 157, and 279, there's an opportunity to connect with veterans and their families, to empower them with a knowledge on how to access these benefits. Veterans often have unique circumstances that affect eligibility outcomes, and they need help understanding how to navigate the application process. And one such case was one that we saw last year with a POW. MJHS cared for a Jewish World War II veteran who was held prisoner by the Nazis for 90 days, and he was discharged with 20% service connection disability. And it wasn't until 2020, when he was diagnosed with PTSD, that he was increased to 100%. Unfortunately, this rating of 100% allowed us to submit a DIC claim for his surviving spouse. So it's not just veterans who are unaware of their benefits, it's also the surviving family members. Public declarations that celebrate the bravery and sacrifice of our veterans, as these three resolutions will do, will help address this gap and engage those who are still with us and who served during World War II and the Korean War. And in closing, MJHS is grateful for this opportunity to share our experience and observations with the Committee on Veterans, and we're also grateful for the collaboration that we've shared with the New York City and the New York State Department of Veteran Services and the many VSOs we collaborate with. MJHS saw a 46% increase in our hospice patients last year, a fact that we can attribute to the increasing number of veterans in New York City over the age of 65 that reached 71% in 2020. We seek to collaborate with you and your colleagues and other veteran community stakeholders to advance our shared work in supporting this vulnerable population to ensure they receive the best possible care throughout their entire life journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Chair Holden, members of the committee, good morning. My name is Peter Kempner, and I'm Legal Director at Volunteers of Legal Service. Volunteers of Legal Service, also known as VAWS, Veterans Initiative, is part of our Senior Law Project, where we focus on end-of-life and incapacity planning for older veterans. We provide these veterans free of charge with powers of attorney, last wills and testaments, living wills, health care proxies, and other advanced directives, allowing them to make their wishes clear at end of life and empower their caregivers to act on their behalf. We also do veteran outreach through our Micro Enterprise Project, which focuses on small business owners and micro entrepreneurs. For many veterans who are returning home, owning a small business is an effective path to financial stability and independence upon their return from service. In addition to my work with VAWS, I'm also a clinical adjunct professor at New York Law School, where I created and have taught their Veterans Justice Clinic since 2015. I've been a legal services attorney for over 20 years and have focused on serving veterans for over 12 of those years. This experience has taught me that the legal issues faced by veterans are often an interconnected web. For instance, knowing that your client has served in the military and when they served can often be the key to unlocking benefits and services that can contribute to protecting their rights. Sadly, that's not always the case for veterans who serve during what is considered to be a peacetime period. New York City veteran, the New York City veteran population is an aging population. Many of our veterans served during this Cold War period that we've been talking about this morning, generally considered 1945 to 1991. And while some of these veterans served during the Korean War period and the Vietnam War period, a fair amount of them served during what is considered to be peacetime. But unfortunately, these veterans may face unique challenges due to the definitions, as was talked about by Commissioner Hendon and by the Department of Veterans Affairs. And those definitions have been adopted by the New York State and New York City programs as well. For some of these programs, these veterans are just categorically ineligible because they did not serve what was considered to be an official wartime period as defined by federal law. One of the most critical benefits that we look at is veterans, the Veterans Pension Program. This program provides monthly payments to wartime veterans who are at least 65 years old, who are totally impermanently disabled, are a patient in a nursing home because of a disability, or are receiving SSI or SSD benefits. Because the veteran pension is only paid to low-income veterans with very limited resources, it's often a lifeline for veterans who would otherwise be at risk of homelessness or hunger. For a single wartime veteran, the VA pension could range from $16,551 per year up to $27,609 per year. For a veteran who needs aid in attendance, aid in attendance of another person to help with their activities of daily living. For Cold War veterans with limited resources who face the same disabilities or the same advanced age, may find themselves living off of SSI benefits alone, which only amount to $12,360 per year. This differential of $4,000 to $15,000 per year could make the difference between a veteran having a roof over their head and food on their table. The lack of access to the VA pension is just one example of how Cold War veterans and other peacetime veterans receive disparate treatment when it comes to access to benefits and services. These veterans raised their hands and served our country honorably, but simply because they did not enlist during a designated wartime period, they could be left out. Thank you for allowing us to submit this testimony today, and we hope that the city will continue to invest in services and programs that make New York City a place where veterans feel supported, welcome, and at home. Thank you.
Peter, I just want to jump in for a question, because this is, you know, this problem on veteran pensions, which we might do, you know, at least do a deeper dive in future hearings. I just want to ask you about that, since you're an expert on that part, which, let's say someone served in peacetime. For instance, I have a veteran who served on an aircraft carrier, he developed lung cancer. Would he be eligible, even though he was in peacetime, he served aircraft carrier with jet fuel constant, and you have to make the connection. Would he get the pension?
Connection is the key word there. So that veteran may be eligible for a service-connected disability benefit, which you have to show that there was an event in service, in this case, the inhaling of jet fuel, coupled with a current disability, the lung cancer, and that there was a nexus between those two things. That's often difficult to prove, and the VA often, you know, denies initial claims, and you have to go through the appeals process, which could take years or even decades. The VA pension is different. The disability does not need to be related to the service. So this could be a disability that is, you know, entirely unrelated, that develops years or decades later. And the simple fact that they served during a wartime period, that they meet some other criteria with respect to financial eligibility, then they would be able to get the pension. It's much less of a challenge to get a pension than it is to get service-connected disability. But a peacetime veteran could get services-connected disability, but they have to show that nexus between the current disability and the event in service.
And, you know, we just saw an article about how the VA makes it more difficult with the paperwork. Like you just mentioned, they just pile it on, and people get frustrated and just give up. And you've seen that probably, so I just couldn't handle all the paperwork, and I just walked away.
And not just the paperwork, the roadblocks that they put up. I mean, these claims can take years and years and years. And, you know, colleagues of mine who represent veterans before the VA in claims cases sometimes are successful decades later.
Right, yeah. Thank you, thanks.
Good morning, Chair Holden, councilmembers. My name is Joshua Sukal. I am one of the Military and Veterans Program Manager for Hope for the Warriors, a national nonprofit, devoted to helping post-9/11 military members and their family, and everything around them, really. I'm here to say thank you so much for Resolution 0157, recognizing June 6th annually as D-Day Remembrance, mainly because that's roughly 80 years, 80 years that it should have been done already. I represent a community that I've found very wholesome. They've taught me how to be a good human, and that is my brothers and sisters of the post-9/11 GWOT era. What I see is the lack of help. I've heard everyone speak. Everyone wants to help, but no one's really helping. The idea that I have to go through schools, different organizations, really, I get tired. But I have people holding my hand, helping me along the way. And I just want to know, do I get more help? Can I get the city's help? Because in the end, people come to New York for this one reason. If you can make it in New York City, you can make it anywhere in the world. And after going through whatever anyone had to go through in the military, you want to make it, you want to do it. In the end, you want to thrive. So GWOT era ended 2021. We will have our veterans coming out of the service. We need to help them. Help me help them. I don't plan on reinventing the wheel, I just plan on using it, and I need help. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll talk offline, too, so thank you.
Thank you for having me here. My name is Timothy Peña. I run an organization called The Forgotten Veteran. I'm also a Cold War vet. I had, I went in, in delayed entry in 1977. At the time, my dad had been in Vietnam, my uncles had been in Vietnam, and my grandfather was Seabees in World War II. So D-Day, as you know, Seabees played, well, the biggest part. They're the ones who put everybody on the beach and cleared the beaches before the D-Day invasion. So thank you for making this in honor of my grandfather. So I spent five months in the shelter, Borden Avenue. I've worked in transitional services since I was homeless, became homeless in 2016, and went into a transitional program in Phoenix. I was immediately put at the front desk, and I spent nearly two years there as a front desk ninja for Catholic charities, and which I received a stipend, a monthly stipend. I got, I believe, $300 or $400 a month stipend for the front desk work. And I also did all of their social photos, we did the announcements, I did the resources, as well as the outreach program for Manahouse, which is, and we did that for about two years. We had anywhere from 100 to 120 visits per month by veterans who were in the homeless shelter, in camps, in their cars. Some of these guys were reservists, not eligible for the VA programs, that we were with Grant Perdiem program, which is the same program over at Borden Avenue. There's a lot of talk here today about Cold War veterans and our benefits. I was PTSD for 30 years before I suffered a huge breakdown in 2014. And it was then that I decided that I needed to either get help through the VA. Part of that was getting diagnosed and filing a claim. As far, so I was a peacetime, but because I was in a combat program or a combat situation, I was PTSD, I got PTSD out of, if you want to put it, in the Persian Gulf during the Iranian hostage siege. I was considered a combat. I was considered a combat zone. So, I have actually gotten a lot of my benefits that wartime veterans would have gotten, but because of that. One of the things that I strongly support is that cooperation between the fantastic organizations that are here in New York City, who are just dying to help us, and making sure that we have those access to those services through these shelters, through DVS, through the VSOs. I would suggest that with nearly 50% of the veterans that I came across while I was working in transitional services, and what I witnessed over at Borden Avenue in the five months there, that we are really wanting to step up. We're kind of those guys who can help the Iraq and Afghanistan veterans maneuver through the system, because we've actually kind of gone through it. But we're seeing a lot here with veteran eligibility. I can guarantee you, the community doesn't care. The community sees us as veterans. They see us as a veteran whether we served in the National Guard, whether we served in the reserves, whether we saw combat, they don't really care that much. And we're being denied access to resources, jobs, and housing because of these policies that are not being worked with. It's not that DHS doesn't want to help us, it's that they're being prevented from helping us. And they're being prevented because we are stuck in these shelters with no community interaction, no community engagement.
Yeah, Tim, let me ask you something, because you said you're a Cold War veteran, but yet you're getting combat services or benefits.
Right.
Did you have to apply for that, or did they just naturally consider you a combat veteran?
So, what I ended up, when I filed my claim, I filed my claim in 2015, and so, at that time, I was just filing a claim for disability, and I ended up getting 70% for PTSD. And the PTSD is more or less, so my underlying conditions were depression and anxiety. I had witnessed a suicide while we were in the Persian Gulf, and just never got past it, and I went for years and years without being diagnosed, and finally, I got diagnosed in 2017, and really, it opened up a lot of doors for me. So, it was determined because of the Iranian hostage siege, that was a combat zone, the whole Persian Gulf. So, all of us that served in that period of time, in that position, part of the siege, and I think it was, what, 144 days or something like that, or 444 days, are actually in a combat zone, and these are the type of things that they don't know.
Yeah, there's a lot of Cold War veterans that had, you know, they had periods of combat, which are not recognized.
Right.
So, that's why, in your case, it's obvious that it, you know, was. But there's, over the years, the Cold War extends, originally, the Cold War was considered before the Vietnam, you know, when I was growing up, it was before the Vietnam era, and then, but then we've had Cold War, you know, even now, so obviously, but we do have skirmishes, we do have battles, we do have action by our service members. So, your case, that's very interesting, because I just wanted to see, was it difficult, like you said, it really wasn't difficult to get it, they recognized it on their own, but it's like, I just wonder about other Cold War veterans who are constantly having these battles of paperwork.
Yeah.
And that's what I think we need to, we need to try to break through that area. Thank you so much. Thank you all for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to call our next panel, Armando Crescenzi and Jean DeFrances. You may begin when you're ready.
Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the Council on Veterans. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the committee for this opportunity to speak. To the veterans advocates and the service organizations present, your unwavering commitment to our cause is evident here today. You stand as a beacon of hope, ensuring the voices of New York City veterans will resonate throughout these chambers, and that our city will never forget its duty to those who served. My name is Armando Crescenzi. I'm a life member of the DAV, the Military Officers Association of America, and the American Legion, where I'm currently a post commander. While my academic credentials speak to political science and law, my most profound badge of honor is my DD 214. In 2010, I embarked on a mission close to my heart by founding a nonprofit organization called Put Veterans First. As service-disabled veterans, our mission is clear: to empower our fellow veterans to forge their own path through small business street vending in the bustling heart of New York City. My journey into street vending began in 2003, where I became acquainted intimately with the hurdles and injustices that disabled veterans face daily. It's a reality stained with disgrace. Our New York State Legislature boasts laws designed to favor veterans, such as the freedom for a disabled vet to vent throughout the state, throughout the state in any city, unshackled by local placement restrictions. Yet despite the promise enshrined in General Business Law 35, and upheld by the appellate division in Casewell v. Ponting, the reality falls far short. The competitive landscape of street vending presents formidable challenges, even for the most resilient. While General Business Law 35 theoretically grants a veteran's access to prime locations, the city refuses to acknowledge our state-granted rights, rendering them null and void. Mayor Adams' recent visit to Corona, Queens, painted a stark picture of sidewalks overrun by illegal vendors. While I empathize with their plight, it's disheartening to witness a de facto moratorium enforcing vending laws against illegal immigrants. Today, I employ the City of New York to extend the same courtesy and respect to its disabled veterans, and to show the tens of thousands of the same respect it shows to its disabled veterans, that it shows to the tens of thousands of immigrants who are vending illegally, declare a moratorium or a grace period, and liberate the service-disabled veterans from the shackles of the city placement restrictions. Let a veteran pursue the American dream with the same fervor as any other New York City resident with the entrepreneurial spirit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Holden, New York City Council members of the Veterans Committee and members in attendance. My name is Jean DeFrances, and I am the commander of the American Legion in the Bronx County. Thank you for providing the opportunity to speak on behalf of our members and Bronx veterans. Since its inception by Congress in 1919, the American Legion has drafted the GI Bill, ushered in the modern VA, and most recently promoted the passage of the PACT Act. The American Legion is the nation's largest and most powerful organization of U.S. veterans and their families. Today, it has nearly 2 million Legionnaire members. I'll not go into detail in the nuances and different cultures and roles of each branch of service, however, I will say the common thread of every American veteran is the desire for peace, freedom, and both security of self and family. The American veteran is part of an all-volunteer force, and they do not join to harm others, but to protect and serve. As veterans, we have no say in which conflicts we engage in or where we are stationed globally. We are property of the United States government. We do what we are told or risk nonjudicial punishment or court martial. Every veteran, from cook to special forces, knows the taste of the gas chambers we experienced in boot camp. We know the bitterness of missing important dates, birthdays, weddings, and funerals. We know what it's like to be told what to eat, when to eat, how to eat. We know the feeling, what it feels like to be marginalized and surrender our freedoms. We are broken down to be built back up as part of a cohesive team in our respective branch of service. This creates strong pillars of our community and city that strive for success. It is why we value our fellow veterans so much. Each of us is also trained in security and serve as sentinels to watch over our own and keep them safe. Yes, some have struggles that we are dedicated to acknowledging and approving, but at large, the American veterans are leaders and a valuable asset to our communities. I'm here today with my colleagues to remind the New York City Council of our value, the sacrifice and commitment we have made and continue to make to our community, state, and nation, and to ask that this city and nation honor their commitment and past agreements with our veterans. So, when we ask for preference for housing and employment, some challenges ask if we think we are special. I'm here to say clearly and without hesitation, yes, we are. We made sacrifices that most of those who criticize veterans will never understand. As commander of the Bronx County American Legion, many members have expressed their concerns over two particular issues that have gained our attention. One, the new rules that New York City veteran vendors renegotiated in GBL 35A were modified in bad faith and not in their best interest. With no clear organization to step up and advocate for them, these veterans were steamrolled with the new regulations. We are here today to ask this committee to review this and reinstate the agreement made with these veteran vendors in GBL 35. A veteran vendor in your community, in your heavily-trafficked parks and landmarks, is an asset, and we must enhance this asset. It is no secret that all our communities are struggling with safety, whether it is perception or reality, I will not debate this issue. Our neighbors do not feel safe. In the Allerton section of the Bronx, we engage in what is called the Safe Haven Program. Small businesses register with local precincts and build a relationship. They are provided a sign in their store window that signals to the community that if they believe they are in danger, they can find safety at this location. For instance, if a child is walking home from school and feels they are being followed by a van, they can enter one of these businesses, knowing it is a safe location until guardians or an authority can be contacted. We have spoken to our members, and we offer the same proposal for our parks and throughout our five boroughs, a safe haven for our community, and all we request in exchange is for experienced and registered veterans to vend. This includes in parks and high-traffic areas they were previously allowed to vend prior to GBL 35A, but with open and cooperative communication. This protects our veterans and guarantees their location, so that our veterans no longer will have to sleep in their vehicles to secure their location in front of the Metropolitan Museum, and protect our veteran vendors, especially our service-disabled veterans, from conflicts and oversaturation. We ask our veterans will be protected and location secured in the event of too many vendors moving to a location, creating an unsafe condition. Our veterans will stay in their locations because they are registered with the city and the local precinct as a safe haven. Our veterans will provide fingerprints and background checks so that they can assist anyone in danger, even added training to identify risks and threats to the community. We are not police officers, and we are not suggesting we serve as vigilantes. We are there to make a living wage and support our city while doing so. We can serve as eyes and ears to keep our cities most vulnerable safe during the day and night, in our parks and in our plazas, where we are not obstructing traffic and providing a service to all New Yorkers and tourists alike. The American veterans are heroes, and we are ready to serve and collaborate with the city we love. I add that no veteran honorably discharged should be denied a vendor's license, and they should be processed and distributed properly. Locations should be secured and approved by proper channels, including the local precinct serve as a safe haven partner. Veteran safe haven vendors should be desired in all locations, including Plaza and Business Improvement Districts. Veterans, especially older or disabled veterans, should be able to secure their location and continue to register and apply a helper. Taxes and fees of this service is something we can discuss in future communication. And lastly, I want to discuss the HHC approval of Fortune Society Just Home Project in the Bronx. The American Legion will not sit by and allow unvetted, unrehabilitated felons to receive resources and services before the veterans of the United States of America. We acknowledge and know full well, people make mistakes. They can be rehabilitated and can learn from these mistakes. Many veterans have also found themselves on the wrong side of the criminal justice system. The concern is that by Just Home's admission and own words, they do not discriminate against the service based on the crime committed. They include murderers, rapists, and violent offenders with no promise or guarantee that they have or will receive treatment and rehabilitation. Where resources readily available, with federal funding dedicated to servicing veterans, there is zero logical or ethical reason that veterans do not receive priority for this location. Our elected officials have approved this plan, the community at large has overwhelmingly supported this proposal, and has stated so in various public hearings. Yet, HHC Board has ignored this option and voted to approve the Just Homes program without considering other, more effective options. Our leadership has spoken with VA leadership, who are in desperate need of more space. They have gained community and elected officials' support, which I'll add, Just Homes does not have. We ask Just Homes to look for another location, which will allow us, the resources we earned, and HHC Jacobi Medical Center loses nothing. And the community and veterans receive the option they deserve and desperately need. I thank you for your time and the extra time, and look forward to continued partnership and communication.
Thank you, Jean. And by the way, we were just talking, I was just talking to my colleague, we're going to request a joint hearing with small business services to really resolve this and really get some of your ideas going. So, you have that commitment from me. We can only request, though. We can't force it.
I appreciate you, and our members are ready to assist and continue the dialogue any way we can.
Great. Thanks. Thank you both for your testimony.
Thank you all for being here.
We have to resolve this in my lifetime. I mean, really, this has been a nagging problem for a very, very long time.
And it's frustrating to a lot of our members and veterans, especially when the agreement was...
But again, these ideas are great, and let's implement them. Thank you so much.
And it cost us nothing. We're giving our services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more last-minute addition to the in-person testimony, and please come forward, Ricardo Garcia. If there is anyone else here who wants to testify, please fill out an appearance card now. Otherwise, after Ricardo Garcia, we will be going to Zoom testimony. So, last chance for appearance cards. Mr. Garcia, you may begin when you're ready.
Hello? Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Oh, actually, good morning. Wow, it's still morning. Yikes, what a long morning. It's a pleasure to see all of you, Councilman Holden. So, it was good to see you, and all the rest of you, council members. I'm actually going to highlight or discuss the same concern that my colleague had presented. I'm the vice commander, first vice commander for the American Legion, and in the same thread, I'm going to discuss the Just Homes initiative that is presented, that was just recently presented by my colleague. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ricardo Garcia, and I'm here to propose an alternative to the current proposal. But first, let me introduce myself. I'm a U.S. Army Combat Disabled Veteran that served 25 years in the United States Army. One of the biggest issues that has faced the veteran community... I'm a U.S. Army Combat Disabled Veteran that served 25 years in the United States Army. One of the biggest issues that has faced the veteran community, in addition to reintegration and returning from service, is securing access to health care and homelessness barriers. In New York State, the United States Census notes that 665,257 veterans in 2021 reside within the state of New York. And in New York City, of those 665,000, 144,558 as of 2021. Many of these veterans have been diagnosed with health conditions that have adversely impacted their ability to live fulfilling and healthy lives. In addition, as a result of these conditions, some veterans' ability to secure employment has been deterred as a result of those ailments. The inability to secure employment directly results from the health conditions and denotes a significant correlation between living fulfilling lives and securing adequate housing, which has been hindered due to some of these ailments. While many strides have been made to identify and improve the health outcomes of this population, the biggest health care issue facing veterans is reducing homelessness. It's synonymous. Sadly, in New York City, men and veterans still do not have access to housing. Congress has gone to great lengths to fund several programs within the Veterans Administration to combat the veteran homelessness crisis, but the data still reveals that many are still struggling to find homes, particularly here in New York City. The programs I previously highlighted, that I previously discussed, I will highlight now, such as the HUD-VASH program, the Housing and Urban Development, VA Supportive Housing, Services for the under, SSBF, Supportive Services for Veteran Families, and the Grand Perdiem. All of these have all been helpful in reducing the number of homelessness veterans, but there are many more who have not benefited from these services and are unaware that these services exist. In 2009, just to highlight how much money has been funneled by the United States government, 376 million was invested to combat veteran homelessness. As of 2022, federal funding has increased to 2.8 billion. 376 million in 2009, in 2022, 2.8 billion. I'll repeat that number, 2.8 billion as of 2022, to combat veteran homelessness and house... So the reason I'm bringing this up is because the Just Homes Initiative is looking, you know, to, they have an empty building there that would absolutely, you know, fit the need of the veteran population. And in addition to that, the James J. Peters Veterans Medical Center stated on many conversations that I have with them that they would be willing and would love to work with Health and Hospital Corps to create a, to create, you know, a facility or a center that can mitigate the veteran homelessness. But the Veteran Administration cannot directly insert themselves into the property. They have to use an outside entity, for example Jericho Project, Tunnels for Towers, you know, Services for the Underserved, Volunteers of America. Any one of these nonprofit organizations that would work with the Veteran Administration, they could actually take that building that is in existence over there at Jacobi Hospital and retrofit it to fit the need of the veteran population. The reason why this is critical, because it would enhance the medical services that are being provided to the community on the east side of the Bronx. In addition, it would almost automatically reduce any veteran homelessness or veteran housing barrier issues that exist. So we are asking the council if you could, you know, please seriously and earnestly take a look at this Just Homes Initiative that is in the Bronx and perhaps maybe consider this alternate plan, which the community has advocated for on numerous occasions, that the community is, you know, asking the city to please turn this into a veteran housing instead of what they're looking to do. And it's a collaborative work between James J. Peters VA Center and Jacobi that would produce tremendous results and enhance their research, their medical research, and enhance their services for all the veterans. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Marado has a...
Thank you for coming here today to speak on behalf of the Bronx County Veterans. This is something that we have brought to the attention of Jacobi Health and Hospitals. We have brought to the attention of certain people in the council. And this is a problem because we, as a community, have a need for housing, and we, our needs are not being met. This is a project through the veterans that we are fully, as a community, would support. We have the need, and we would support them 100%. I've had people who live right outside the walls of this building saying how they would come and help with the veterans on a day-to-day basis, help them with their shopping, help them with any kind of support that they need. And our cries are being, we're not being listened to as a community, and this is like, kind of devastating. So thank you for coming and speaking on behalf of our community, and I really do appreciate it, and hopefully this is something that we can continue fighting together.
Absolutely. I couldn't, thank you. Thank you so much. Really, I mean, it's a win-win for everyone, for the city, financially.
It's right on the campus of the hospital. They could have their health care needs be met, they could have their mental health care needs be met.
And the Veterans Administration is ready to go. They're all ready, they're all set, just, you know...
These are organizations that have the funding.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. But Councilmember Palladino has a question or a comment?
Comment. Here we go again. Misspent, misappropriated funds, once again, veterans being ignored, illegal immigrants crossing the border and getting their needs met. In a minute, in a minute, they've found housing. You found your own, you found your own solutions here in the Bronx, Jacobi Hospital. So my question is simply, why? How come? And I just don't understand. So that's three questions along with my statement. How do you, what do you know about that? So now, I want answers to this. I want to know why this is, why your voices are going unheard, and thank you for testifying today, and thanking Christie for making us aware of your dire straits that you are in, because once again, our veterans are put on a back burner while those who swim the Rio Grande to get here are getting everything they need, and you have put your lives on the line, and your health needs aren't being met, your housing needs aren't being met. Our veterans need to be handled and handled properly. I promise you, this committee will work on whatever it is that our veterans need. Thank you very much for coming here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to everybody.
Yep, thank you. Did you want me to answer those questions?
No, no, you can, wait. Ricardo, Ricardo, wait, wait, wait.
I think we should start with funding DVS, giving them a significant amount of money so they can move accordingly, because they're really the tip of the spear.
But, you know, I visited a supportive housing for veterans in the Bronx, and they said they had vacancies for supportive housing, but not for affordable housing. So the next step was a big problem. So people had to stay in supportive housing longer, and it was very, very difficult, and many just transitioned into finding their own apartments without any help. So when I, I have an affordable housing construction project going at my district, and we had no carve-out for veterans, but I've spoken to the developer, I said, "Well, I'll approve this, or at least I'll support this if you consider veterans priority." And he said, "Well, we could do more of that construction if the city wanted to do it." So that's what, that's our goal here on this committee, is to get affordable housing priority for veterans, and we're going to work with all the council members here to make sure that that happens.
So the affordable housing has to match and be in alignment with, you know, the community gross income. For example, on 161st, there was an article that was released, I think it was last week, the medium base income to qualify for that affordable housing is 65,000, but in 161st Street, the median income is 35,000. So that's not affordable housing by any means.
Right, right.
And then the other thing that we also have to look at is that, just going back to the Just Homes Initiative, there's over 80 units in there that could be dedicated, you know, to, you know, one-bedroom apartments for individuals that will meet that need. In addition to that, they could provide clinical support, they could provide, you know, healthcare providers, clinicians, because this is right on the campus for Jacobi. In addition to that, a lot of the Jacobi staff does not want what's coming. So I just, I think it's a win-win, maybe a new request, a new RFP perhaps should go out, might help, you know, to...
Well, certainly, we'll talk to you again about some ideas, but again, you said you served 25 years?
25 years.
Wow, what, how...
I, if I was smarter, I would have probably done four.
When you enlisted, how old were you?
Oh my God, I was 18.
Six?
18.
18, wow.
Well, actually, 17 went in at 18.
Wow, so that, thank you for that amazing service, and thank you for your advocacy now.
Absolutely, no, it's not a problem. Served at the World Trade Center during 9/11, you know, served many of the bridges and tunnels in the airports, on the security missions in the country.
Thanks, the American Legion is amazing. Thank you so much for your testimony.
God bless you all. Thank you, have a wonderful day.
And we have one final, final in-person witness before going to Zoom testimony, Gus Stavroulakis. Please come forward. You may begin when you're ready.
I want to say thank you for having this forum and allowing us to speak. So I want to emphasize a few things that's already been said. As a Navy veteran and currently serving within the National Guard, a lot of guardsmen and reserves do not get the benefits that they need, especially when they're signing on SAD, which is State Assigned Duty. Currently, we had COVID-19, where we had many multiple National Guard members in response to assisting nursing homes and providing vaccines to service members, where they will not be eligible for any federal benefits, along with assisting in asylum mission. We have, I have met multiple soldiers that are assisting in this mission that will not see federal veteran benefits at all. It's something that I wanted to make known to more people, as this is not an issue that is talked about a lot. Second thing is, I'm a researcher at NYU, currently working with veterans' health issues in preventing opioid overdose within the veteran population. This is an issue that has not been addressed. I work with many veterans currently homeless or in shelters such as Borden Avenue, and do not necessarily get the resources that they need, whether through mental health or physical health. And so, like a lot of my other veterans have mentioned, is their housing. They're going two to three years without any housing addressed, living in a shelter for multiple years and being passed around from one shelter to another. I just want to let the committee know that this is happening and to be aware of this issue. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, I heard at Borden, when, every time I visit, we get the same, and the biggest complaint is the mental health issue, that we're not really addressing, you know, really serious issues. So we really need, certainly, I don't know if NYU has, still has that waiting list to help with mental health issues. Do they still?
So the NYUs, just like a lot of veteran benefits, have strings attached. A lot, as we are, as I'm one small entity within NYU, and as a researcher, and I just want to say, I'm talking about for myself, not as a representative of my university that I work for, their mental health services are for certain types of veterans, for either deployed or combat veterans, such and so forth. So depending on the facility and the organization, it varies. Part of my job and my role is to help navigate fellow veterans for either their health needs or whatever type of services that they're looking for. And what I try to do is navigate them to low-threshold resources that might necessarily be a barrier. If they do qualify for certain VA benefits and they're willing to navigate that way, that's how I navigate my, the individuals that I work with, along with either city benefits as well, too, navigating towards that way, because the threshold is lower.
Right, thank you again for your testimony and all the work that you're doing. I appreciate it. Thanks for our veterans.
Okay, seeing no other appearance cards at the moment, we are going to turn to testimony of witnesses on Zoom. We have four currently registered, and I will call you one by one. We will start with A. Gentry Torrell, and the sergeant will tell you when to begin.
Time starts now.
I'm actually a representative of NYU, so hopefully I can answer some of those questions. But good morning, Chair Holden and members of the Committee on Veterans. Thank you for holding the hearing today and for the opportunity to testify. I'm Dr. Ann Gentry Torrell, Clinical Psychologist and Assistant Professor in the Department of Psychiatry at NYU Langone Health. I'm testifying today on behalf of the Cohen Military Family Center at NYU. Our center was established just over 11 years ago to fill a well-documented gap in services available to veterans and their families. The Military Family Center provides free mental health treatment for veterans and their families, regardless of discharge status, who are experiencing the long-term effects of military service. This also includes treatment for co-occurring substance use and mental health disorders. Since inception, our center has served 4,077 veterans and their family members. To reach veterans who are ineligible for care elsewhere or who may be disconnected from mental health services, we have developed strong partnerships with the VA, the Department of Veteran Services, and many other organizations. The sheer number of individuals served demonstrates the necessity for public-private partnerships in order to meet the needs of the veterans and their families in our community. Central to the mission of the Military Family Center is decreasing barriers to high-quality, evidence-based care for our nation's military families. While the center was originally established to meet the needs of the growing number of post-9/11 veterans seeking mental health services, we consistently receive referrals from veterans and family members of all eras who continue to be affected. In an attempt to honor our mission, we extend our resources to meet these needs. All too often, we have seen well-intentioned new missions that sometimes minimize the impact of veterans of prior wars. Thus, we believe it is essential to honor our World War II, Korean War, and Cold War veteran, as is described in these resolutions. We applaud the New York City Council Committee on Veterans for supporting this legislation towards equity for veterans of all eras, to ensure they are acknowledged for their work and sacrifices. This acknowledgement can often enhance a sense of meaning in one's life, which we know has a positive impact on mental health. Veterans and their family members are seeking mental health services at a higher rate than ever before, and this sharp increase in demand for our services has resulted in struggles to meet the demand and ultimately a waitlist for services. For example, we currently have a waitlist for our city council-funded Traumatic Brain Injury Program. The funding from the Mental Health Services for Veterans Initiative remains the sole source of funding for our center's TBI program, and this program provides much-needed evaluation and rehabilitation services for veterans with TBI, many of whom struggle with co-occurring substance use disorders. Our center is equipped to work together with the community to address the ever-growing needs of veterans and their families. We hope the council will further invest in the veteran population, and we urge the council to consider further supplementing citywide capacity to meet the ongoing demand for support services for veterans. Thank you again for the council's past funding for the Military Family Center and the opportunity to testify today.
Right on time. Thank you very much. By the way, we do have to, I don't like the idea of a waiting list for veterans, and that bothers me. Let's talk about exactly how much you need and how many veterans are not being served. TBI is a very, very important area, and that needs to be fully funded. So this committee will support you. Obviously, we've heard nothing but great things about your organization, NYU does amazing work with our veterans, and thanks so much for your testimony, and thanks for being very concise on the time. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next witness on Zoom is Sergio Villaverde, and the sergeant will let you know when to begin.
Time starts now.
Good, good morning, Chair Holden and committee members. I thank you very much for holding this important hearing and all the work that you do. My name is Sergio Villaverde. I personally am a disabled veteran as well. I served 32 years in the Coast Guard Reserve. I'm a retired New York City Police Officer, former New York City EMT, and I'm currently an attorney with my own small community practice. I also serve as vice chair of my local community board and chair of the Special Committee on Veterans. I do want to bring to the attention of the committee, as in our discussions, much has been said, maybe everything's been said, but not everyone has said it. But there are some things, particularly with respect to being a reservist and a National Guard member, that we are often overlooked as... we are often overlooked, as was testified to previously. We don't often meet the federal guidelines for veterans. We're not counted. And, you know, during, during World War II and during most of the major conflicts, the majority of the people serving are our fellow citizens, as Winston Churchill called them, twice a citizen, serving as citizens and serving as part of the military. And the reservists, you know, face special stressors that even active-duty people don't face. The employer discrimination, it's illegal, it's illegal by federal law, by state law, but, you know, people have a hard time with people serving in the, in the reserves and losing them the time that they do. I think we need to do, we need to find ways to do more to support our employers. As a small business owner, I know how it is on both sides of that. So, you know, the employer discrimination that we, that we face, the families, the family stressors that all military families face, even serving on your weekend, serving on your two weeks of training, missing family events, missing birthdays, missing holidays, are all things that reservists and guard members face. And we do, I, I don't believe we do enough. I know that our current commissioner in the city is himself a reservist, so that's a great thing. He's, he's able to speak to that with authority. And he has expanded many of our, many of our benefits. But there are, there, we still have a, a long way to go in supporting, recognizing the reservists, their families, the guardsmen, their families, also the community that supports them. We really have to find creative ways to support employers who hire reserve and guard members because they play an important role. As the, as the gentleman who was here before, you know, he served on state active duty. He's been, he's been, he's been critical during COVID, during other crises for us. And we need to be able to provide support in that community. And I thank you very much for your time.
Wow. Thank you again. Your resume is unbelievable, all of your, your service to our nation, our city. We thank you. But you just gave me another hearing topic. I just want to thank you for that one because we do have to address this, that all the discrimination against the reservists, this needs to be really exposed. So, and like, you're right about supporting businesses, but that's a very, very good idea. Maybe we could do that through legislation, it's possible. But again, I just can't believe your, all of your accomplishments and how you served our, our city and our nation. And again, I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, committee.
All right.
Thank you. Our next witness on Zoom will be Ryan Graham, and the sergeant will let you know when to begin.
Time starts now.
Hi. Good morning or good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to the members of the Committee on the Veteran, Committee on Veterans and Chairman Bob Holder for holding this hearing to discuss Resolutions 0010, 0157, and 0279. Many of you already know me. Some of you don't. I'm Ryan Graham. I wear different caps, but obviously, today, I'm wearing my cap under, as the vice chairman of the Legislative Committee for the Department of New York PFW. And I'm also the chairman for District 1. So, Legislative Committee is subordinate to the Department of New York. The Department of New York encompasses the entire state of New York with over 300 posts and nearly 40,000 members, having served in conflicts ranging from World War II to Korea, Vietnam, and Desert Storm, Operation Enduring Freedom and Iraqi Freedom, as well as smaller combat operations over the prior years, including operations under Korean Defense and the Cold War. While major conflicts such as World War II, Vietnam, and the most recent Global War on Terror operations in Afghanistan and Iraq tend to recede by our profiles, we cannot forget those who have served under the banners of least-known wars and conflicts. The Korean War, otherwise known as the Forgotten War, operations including Korean Defense following the Korean War armistice, and the Cold War lasting for over 40 years are conflicts that should be remembered not only for the purpose of history, but for those who served and sacrificed under those engagements. Personally, my own service is intrinsically linked to my uncle William, a veteran of the Korean War, having served as a paratrooper under the 1st Cavalry Division, and his younger brother, my father, Donald Graham, serving in the United States Air Force as a military policeman and patrolling south of the DMZ following the armistice during a service series between 1956 and 60. Although both of them are long gone, their service to their country and community when they came back home is one of the primary drivers for my own service. And the reason why we shall not forget their, their service away and back at home in New York City. While we strive to support those that have served through fiscal and other means, veterans and VSOs alike, we must not forget to remember those conflicts, these conflicts from the Korean War and Korean Defense following the armistice, and those quite professional serving on the front lines of the Cold War. Besides supporting our veterans and VSOs through tangible means, it is also, also the responsibility of those that have served and those that have not to remember and become teachers to those important moments in history. In conclusion, we support these resolutions. And speaking a little bit off of these resolutions, things that were touched upon, thank you Chairman Holden for bringing up the issue with VSOs as far as the fines. One of the things we've been saying for years is, is outreach instead of finding VSOs out of existence. And obviously, we don't have too many advocates on the legislature, whether city council or the state. And obviously, Senator Adabo, he's, he's pushed the 120-day bill. I just had to mention that. So, hopefully eventually, we get this, this push-through. And a few other things, and, and I love Councilwoman Ariola and Palladino because they, they may be brief, and what they say is, but it's very powerful. And I know Joanne, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ariola, she mentioned the, the founding part. I've been dealing with policy for over a decade for veterans under the banner of the PFW. And unfortunately, it's, it's, it's a low-hanging fruit, to be honest. And metrics is something I believe in. One of the key indicators is the budget for the city councils for DVS, 5.11 million compared to $117 billion budget. That is a fraction of a fraction of a percent. That, honestly, I'm going to be frank, it's pitiful. And like I said, I, I, you know, thank you so much, you know, for, you know, Chairman Holden and the other council, council members on the committee. I know you guys push a lot to get funding, whether for veterans in general or VSOs. And I just want to throw out a metric, a few more numbers. 5.11 million, that's, that's not a lot. I saw recently, I think it's sitting in the queue, a couple of council members pushing for a $15 million budget, in the budget towards, for migrants when it comes to mental health. That's three times the amount for an entire agency. And that's shameful. And I know there's, there's been some other speakers. I'll, I'll be quick. But another number, now, this is most recent with Iraq and Afghanistan. We fortunately had 7,000 casualties, give or take a few numbers. Up till today, now, granted, I'm part of the first part of the Global War on Terror, I served in Iraq. I enlisted right after 9/11. And most of us, we're hitting our 40s now. And the suicide numbers are at 30,000, over 30,000 already. So, that's more than four times the number of people that died on the battlefield. So, you can only imagine previous generations. And I'm, I'm just going to throw out one last thing and intangible. March 5th, so about a month ago, a good friend of mine, we know, we actually really good friends from high school, I know Councilwoman Ariola knows it. She represents a part of the district. Friend of mine from high school, John Adams, he, he also enlisted in the military around the time I did, became a senior, senior NCO, got out, got his degree, went back in, and commissioned as an officer. Kyle Luciano, an Ozon Park native, he unfortunately took his own life on March 5th. So, honestly, and then just to cap this off, I've said it already, but thank you again, Chairman Holden and the council members on, on this committee. You guys, you, you push a lot. We need more support from the rest of the council and the mayor's office to, to, to really support initiatives. I mean, it's been too long. We are the low-hanging fruit. And there, we, we see a lot of money being pushed towards other things, but veterans are always kind of left at the wayside. Thank you. And I apologize for going over the time, Chairman Holden and the committee. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, Ryan, it's always great to see you. And thank you for all the work that you do for our veterans. And I know it's almost like a, a full-time job, your work. It probably is a full-time job. That, that, you're amazing. You're all over the place. And you touched upon a lot of great things, and I agree with everything you said, especially the DVS budget. It is an embarrassment. And I think we need, all need to tell the mayor that. That's, you know, I, I used to mention doubling it, but now I'm beyond that. Quadruple the budget would be a start. But again, Ryan, nice to see you again. Thanks for touching on so many great things. And again, thanks for, for waiting around for your testimony.
And thank you. Our final Zoom witness is Vishal Balani. The sergeant will let you know when to begin.
Time starts now.
Is he, is he on? Does anybody know if he's on?
There's a mute icon on him. There's a mute icon.
No, that's Ryan. That's the previous one.
Okay. We do not see Vishal Balani. And I'm going to just call others who had registered to make sure they are not on. Michael Applegate, Mary Wacazore, and Brendan Gibbons. If none of those are here, we are ready to adjourn the hearing. Let me just double-check council member for one minute with my people running the Zoom.
All right. Well, we'll just check to see if the people that Gina called are still online because we hate to not have their testimony when they waited so long. We're going to wait one more minute. I'll just fill in the dead time here now. But I just want to thank everyone, both present and online, for an amazing hearing. We got a great, so many great ideas. I think the testimony was probably the best I've, I've seen as a committee chair. I don't, I think, we'll not clap. But this, this, we got, I got a lot of ideas. I think everyone here, we have greater resolve now to not only increase DVS's budget, but also the budget for our veterans. And certainly, we will push hard. But the veteran community has been like, again, so amazing over the years as I've been committee chair and such great individuals. So, again, I want to thank everyone here and both here and online. And how are we doing on the?
I'm not having any...
Okay. I'm sorry if you, if you were online and, or you can't get through, if you could submit testimony, we'll certainly look at it. And, and again, I thank everyone who testified. And this hearing's adjourned.